Custody themselves. And last, we're working on contracts already to enhance some supports for kin providers. We want to do more enrichment activities with them, educational activities, mentoring resources, trauma resources, because again, like any of us, you suddenly get another child infused into your home, you're faced with some barriers that that child or situation may have brought into your home, and they need better support. So we're engaging in some local contracts to do that, as well as developing a kinship navigator system. And that's really about, the state has a navigator system, but it's pretty limited regionally. We'd like to dedicate more internal resources. Part of it is just simply, your typical kinship worker or caseworker doesn't have time to explore all, even what JFS has to offer this family. So we want to make sure that those families know everything that there is available to them within JFS, so all of the economic sustainability programs, PRC, et cetera. But we also want to make sure that they're connected to whatever programs the community may be offering. Prevention services, the estimate here is $500,000. This is really, you're going to notice that these get a little less detailed as we go on, because we've really started to work deeply in the kinship area already. But our focus here is around prevention resources, looking at building resiliency and protective factors for families, lowering the rates of maltreatment and recurrence, and targeting families early on when they first need help. Specific prevention programs will look at things like expanded health services by co-locating nurses on site, birth-to-three programming, where we have the highest risk, and crisis stabilization and respite resources, like protective childcare. We're also looking to expand academic tutoring and enrichment and mental health resources and culturally respectful parenting enrichment and family treatment services in-home. Youth services, we've talked a little bit about this in this room. This is not yet a full concept, but we have dedicated $2.4 million to the creation of a youth service, Office of Youth Services, to coordinate and manage on a continuum. And this isn't just about JFS kids. This is about prioritizing housing for youth, vocational training, educational training, and the only thing we do want to do as JFS is make sure we prioritize services for our youth that are already emancipating in the age group of 16 to 24, because we want to set them up for success. But this will be broader than just JFS kids in custody. We would like to expand best practice models for older youth, like My First Place, which is a nationally recognized education and employment program, purchase virtual independent living skills programs, and contract for mentoring and coaching programs for youth. Again, in concert with our activities around the bus, we see and certainly want to expand our community partnerships and outreach, we've estimated $500,000 to enhance our transparency and publicly available data, and also to partner with our county partners, the Office of Family Voice, to use their voice and lived experience as an informant to our policy and practice. We are also expanding the Office of Clients' Rights with staff dedicated to the community-based education and program access. That would be your staff that's on the bus right now, they're going to move under the Clients' Rights area, and also continue to work with community partners around various collaborations. We want to continue the fatherhood collaborative and expand anything into the community that we can with mobile technology and providing services and information to families. And finally, housing stability. This also, obviously, was a PCG priority. We're estimating $2 million. This is in its very earliest stages of asking the JFS Planning Committee to look at how we prevent family homelessness through the availability of concrete goods, emergency assistance, and resources for families. And we want to look specifically at funding housing for youth six months post-emancipation to stabilize before they're out on their own. And lastly, that we're also going to involve our partners in the homeless system continuum of care. And with that, I'll pause. I ran through a lot, say thank you. Thank you to all of you for your support, and thank you on behalf of our employees, the community we serve. I have to say, there's a couple of folks that send me stories every week. They try to keep me pumped up a little bit with these great stories of the frontline. And it's not, it shouldn't go without saying that you've got a really invested workforce, despite the difficulties, despite the trauma they face and the workloads they face. I'm very grateful, and I'm very thankful to be here.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation. I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Vice President Reese?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Let me, first of all, just say that this is the safety net of our county, and so it is important that you are the biggest budget, because so many people that you touch, this department touches and helps, and helps stabilize from youth to senior citizens. So I do want to give a big shout-out to you and the whole Department of Jobs and Family Services. Wanted to ask just a couple of questions. A lot of times we use, we use acronyms.
Sorry.
Can you tell me what the PCG is, people might be watching? Plus, I need to know.
Yes, the PCG is, now you're going to quiz me here. The entity that participated in the tax levy review.
Oh, the Tax Levy Review Group?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I'm like, what is the name?
No, no problem.
The Public Consulting Group.
Government, we love acronyms, we love them. Now, you mentioned the bridge, can we go back to that?
Sure.
What did you mean for, from the bridge?
So the Benefit Bridge is the 7.1 mil, back it up.
Yeah.
I think it's under, yeah. So again, it's a pilot, but it's a pile of money, and we are thrilled to have it. What we are going to focus on initially is families who can't access childcare, because they're making a little bit too much money, or they access childcare and they fall off the other end of it. So again, it's, this goes all the way back to 1990. I started in childcare, and I remember these discussions of the childcare cliff. You know, you just, you really do fall off. So we're going to infuse dollars there. We're also going to infuse dollars when families lose cash assistance, because again, those are time-limited benefits. Sometimes people meet hardship criteria, and sometimes they don't. But we're going to be taking a look at anybody who loses their cash assistance and how we can support them until they stabilize, because a family's timeline isn't necessarily correspond with eligibility timelines. And lastly, the group that is in our youth that are emancipating, you heard me talk a little bit about that with housing, but that's another group that we really want to infuse some mentoring support to make sure that they're financially competent, to make sure that they're ready to take on the world by themselves. So all of those dollars will be going, really, in three very separate branches, but it will be co-managed, so that we're keeping an eye on it.
Gotcha. I think that's good. The other issue I want to go to is the Child Services, and I know the taxpayers passed the levy. One of the things we talked about allows us to do some additional things. Can you talk about that, what the additional things are, we'll be able to do now?
Again, overall, like I said, I would just stress that the 70% is flowing directly to Client Services. So we hope that on the Children's Services front, it's more prevention. It's getting out in the community. You saw our Safe to Sleep campaign.
Yes.
I mean, that's a great idea, and something that we did on the prevention. So we're not waiting until families come to us and say, you know, we've got an issue. Let me get to the other one here. I mean, obviously, kinship is part of that funding.
Yeah.
And that is preventative, because we don't want those kids, we want those kids ultimately to stabilize in their homes with their families. We know kids do best when they're with their families. So if we can, if we can't reunite with mom or dad, and we can, you know, ultimately secure custody and supply auntie or whomever with services, that's another place that we're doing investment on that front. And then the rest of it is, again, it's a little less flushed out. But birth-to-three programming, that is an area where we're going to try to focus on specializing caseloads. When those come in, we can really concentrate on what their needs are. A lot of times, that's just young mom, maybe first-time mom, but that's also when the child is most vulnerable. We also see in our foster placements, some need for crisis stabilization. So you may have a foster care placement, and, you know, they run up against something that's new to them, and they throw their hands up, maybe Carla will be talking about this on the back end of it, and they take them to the emergency department and say, I, you know, I'm done, I can't do it. So we need to infuse some support around kin and foster, so that they don't get to that place. And if they do, they receive the help they need from the medical providers, and they don't ultimately end up in Carla's area, because that's where we don't want kids to eventually end up. Beyond that, it's a lot of just focus on services that are normally in our case plans, mental health services, community-based, and in-home, and trying to make that not a cookie cutter. We want, we want services to be based on families' needs.
Awesome. The 513 Relief Bus, I want to definitely give a shout-out to all the staff that are out there and have been out there. As we move forward with this model of what I call mobile services, where we take Hamilton County to the people, staffing, that has been an issue, from what I've seen and heard from your experts. We need about 10 out there, because many people think, oh, it's just COVID, it's going to go away, it's getting, you know, people are sleeping in their cars at 3:00 in the morning and waiting to get in line, and it's just one of the ways. We have other ways you could still access it. But as we put different services out there, how much in here do we have for staffing? Because that's one of the things I'm looking at, when we have to turn in kind of what we think about the budget. I want to make sure that we, it seems like we need at least 10 to get through 100 people per stop.
Yeah, that's a good round number. I mean, I think that's what we've been seeing pretty consistently. We've already put five in, and we added five to the budget for 2022. So again, it's not as specific as which position it's going to, but these outreach efforts. So the first five will come on in 2021, and we have that in our budget. We covered that with existing vacancies. But for 2022, we added an additional five positions, and we're looking at, you know, is that the Benefit Bridge? Is that, because as those programs come online, that may be what you need in the community. But it's by no means, five is not the end. I say all the time, I wish government could move faster for me. I know I'm a high-speed person, but we got to start with the first five. And then when those vacancies open up, we'll be able to examine what to do with those. Do we need more of those? Or at the same time, you know, are we going to do Benefit Bridge and some of the other things that are connected to it?
Okay, because I know, we had put ARPA money, and that would cover us for four years, for five there. And I want to, I just want to make sure we hit the ground, the number of people is not becoming less, it's becoming more as people are.
Correct.
And a number of other services we'll be putting on board. So I just, you know, just for my own self, I want to look at, I think 10 was what your team was showing me, that we could do up to 100 people at least with 10.
Yeah. And again, I just want to make sure we have crossover, so that if we go out there today, and let's, you know, a couple of years down the road, and it's no longer e-rep, they now have to switch gears, and they have to know how to do childcare Benefit Bridge, or they have to know how to do some of the things we're talking about with Children's Services. That's a big ask, and so those positions are really going to stretch much bigger than what you've seen currently out in the community.
Got you, okay. And in your budget, do you have the equipment necessary for the relief bus? There were some things, like, I don't know, Plexiglas, technology-based, is that already in here, or is this something I need to be looking to try to add?
All of those staffing positions, and we have a service-level agreement with the state, so really, all of our equipment is covered through that agreement. It's, for a while there, I don't know if we really felt it with the bus, but for a while in 2020, of course, with the supply chains and everything going haywire, it took us a long time to get everybody up to speed. And we're, we still have a couple of pockets, but it's not a funding issue, it was really a supply chain issue getting it from the state. And I think we're over that hurdle. Plexiglas shouldn't be a problem. And this guy all the time just says to me, when I say, I need money, can I have it? He says, yes. So right now, we're in a really good spot, and I don't want to put any drain on county budget. I think we are more than prepared to do whatever is needed.
Okay. And then my last question is marketing. We've got some great programs, like you said, the Kinship Program and so many others. What I saw with the, out there with the bus and people that I've talked to, they made, the good part was, they came for something else, and we were able to get some people connected to a kinship program. They didn't even know, because a lot of times, kinship, you just take the family member in, and you do your thing, and you don't know about it. Not just with kinship, but do we have in here marketing, so that we can market? I know we got PSAs, but a lot of people, you know, those come on at 2:00 in the morning for.
Not that this was a tee-up, but it, since I brought.
Yay!
I'll explain what it is. Thank you.
Awesome.
As I mentioned in the, in the tee-up in the beginning, without staff, it's really hard to do anything. So our first marketing effort is directly related to recruitment. And so what you're looking at, these are real Children's Services workers with real quotes, an emphasis on what our county benefits are, and trying to get attention to why you want to come and work here. So we can do this on any front, but we really need to start with the programming specific to getting staff in and getting these positions filled.
Thank you.
We also are working on some video, and I'll share that when it's ready. But it, I mean, if you can just look at those pictures, I love the one, there's just a couple in there that say, speak such volumes about how thrilled our staff are to work here. The videos are even better. So when we get that together, we'll share that with you as well.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, thank you, Amy, for your presentation. This is, yeah, this is great. Couple of questions for you. In the past, we have had a graph that talks about this prevention effort. And so the graph highlights the number of calls for service that come into JFS, and it also tracks the number of kids that are in the system with JFS. And what we were seeing, and this has been a while back, because I remember Moira providing that graph, was that the calls for service continued to go up, but the children in care leveled off. And she described that as a result of some of these preventive measures that were being put in place to try to keep kids safely at home by addressing some of the family issues in the home, whether it's the electricity is out, or there's no food in the fridge, or whatever. And so is what you're putting in front of us, it sounds like an expansion of that, you know, prevention. Can you also, though, not today, but at a different meeting perhaps, or in the future, provide us with this graph? Because it was really helpful to see the trend lines, so that we can understand how effective these strategies are as you continue to roll out this prevention work? Because, you know, I think some folks had the false impression that you weren't continuing to get the calls for service, and it wasn't that, it's just you were preventing kids from going into the system, which was great, right? So can you get that for us?
I can. And I will tell you proactively, we've already begun a new dashboard, this is my favorite thing, right? Specific to these key priorities and the TLRC recommendations, because what we don't want to be doing is in two years scrambling to figure out what we did in the last year or two. We really want to be very intentional from the very beginning of 2022. So we can, we will look at the initiatives and how they're progressing in terms of implementation. But in addition to that, I think we already have a Children's Services dashboard that may speak to what you're talking about. Yes, calls from the community, but we continue to see, minus the lingering, really, adolescence from the opioid epidemic, we are continuing to see a downward trend in terms of custody or flat.
Right, right.
So, yes, I'm happy to provide.
And it's quite the victory story, really. So if you could provide it, I would love to talk about that.
But it also is an area where, right now, some of those calls that we may not bring in or to assess, or kids we may not bring into custody, those preventative efforts may develop a separate little area where we are still supporting those kinds of families that don't need to come in for full-blown.
Right.
Safety reasons, let me say it that way. They have needs.
Great, thank you. Also, you talked about the dynamics of trying to retain the workforce, which we're hearing from everyone. Every department has the same issues. So I just am wondering, and this is kind of anecdotal, I guess, can you attribute that to, you know, wages, you've said, are part of that? What other dynamics are at play here where we're having either trouble attracting people or retaining people?
Well, ironically, I just sent a report to Jeff that came from Kevin Holt that I think is true probably of the workforce in our community. You have a faster-than-expected aging-out cliff, where folks who are retirement-eligible are leaving. They either left during COVID, or they're leaving now in preparation to go on to do something else. And they're being tempted by other opportunities. So we do see that. I mean, this week alone, I got 10 resignations, I got three retirements. And so I'm not used to seeing those retirements come through with such a pace, so that's one end of it. On the other end, the two things that I really, that really struck me last week is we had a young woman who's a very successful frontline manager, making a good salary, decide to go to culinary school and open up a business in honor of her grandmother. And I'm not going to speak her name, but she knows who she is. She got a call from me to say, why are you leaving? I get it, it's entrepreneurial, it's an opportunity, and she's going to take a risk and do it. And then you do have still, I think, for our workforce, who sometimes struggles with their own needs and their family. We had a young lady who had some family issues, who was just like, I just can't, I can't balance at all, I can't do it. So that's what we tend to see. And the last piece of that, especially on the Children's Services front, they're being tempted away by our partners. You've heard us talk about CPS, Children's Hospital, other community partners, they're all in the same boat. So we're all kind of jockeying to keep the same people.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. And my last thing, I was also going to talk about the Benefit Bridge, and I think you've answered this question already, it is related to the cliff effect.
Yes.
That we've been talking about for a number of years. And so, did you say that Hamilton County is the pilot project for the state?
It's one of eight, or seven or eight, but we are the only metro county.
Oh, okay.
So we're the only big county.
Okay, all right. So interesting that we're finally starting to figure out how we address the cliff, because we hear about this all the time. So I'll be very interested in two years' time to figure out what impact that had.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, and this is very nice.
Thank you.
So, thank you. As we look at staff, and I'll just continue that discussion, I think we need to move past the traditional hiring process, and you probably are doing it, I'm thinking about possibly intermittent employees, part-time employees, temporary employees, and maybe even consultants, if you're not already doing that. We're going to have to get away with what we're, to what we're used to doing and try something different, and.
I completely agree. We have moved to some part-time work, especially, like this young lady that I was talking with, I said, would part-time help you? You know, so it is a benefit that we have offered in some cases. I would add one more to that, is because you've had so many people retiring, the ability to bring those people back.
Come back.
Part-time would be hugely beneficial. I know that's not been popular here.
Right.
But I will tell you, as soon as our retirees walk out the door, they're just going to another social service agency or a JFS to work part-time.
Wow, okay. And in addition, Amy, the Adult Protection Services, was there an increase in your budget for them, or not?
They actually experienced an increase in both need and staffing in '21, so we have not expanded that further in '22. But they went from, help me out, was it five to seven, I think, positions? Because they too are seeing an increased need.
Okay, so you're, in your budget, it indicates that more money is going into this department?
Well, it would be part of the, if we backed up to those funding streams, the social services, they're Title 20, am I right?
Their own separate allocation.
Okay.
I can't hear you, sir.
They are their own separate allocation. You can come up here.
Yeah.
He doesn't.
He said he don't want to come.
Hello.
Hi.
They have their own separate allocation from the state.
Okay.
We also use senior services levy dollars to cover that. And then anything that goes over that, we usually use some Title 20 dollars that we get from the state, which is federal dollars.
Okay, very good, thank you so much.
Sure.
And lastly, it's my understanding, I'm looking at the budget, I don't, I won't go, it was 105, it went up significantly, 105 to 113. And I'm just wondering, because it was my understanding that there was a reserve, you guys have a pretty good, significant reserve at JFS. And so what are you using that reserve for?
So the reserve, do you want to speak to that? She's talking about the specific reserve. The increase on the line item you're talking about, from 105 to 113, is specifically in the PA fund. So that's, that's not our reserve at all. That is allocations coming from the state, and the big bump there is because of the Benefit Bridge.
Okay. So what about the reserve? How much is in your reserve? Because I remember having a discussion with Tim about that, and you were doing pretty good. He's raising his eyebrow.
I think, Amy, I think that relates specifically to the levy, the local funding in the levy, right?
Mm-hmm.
I believe our report from the previous month was about 150 million.
Yeah.
Cash balance.
Okay. 150 million? Okay, so you'll use that to supplement any services that are not?
Correct, because the actual, maybe this is the true question, yes. Our revenues, our budgeted plan for expense are below our revenues. So yes, we will tap into the cash balance for some of those new expansion programs.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. I don't have anything else. I appreciate your presentation and.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will move forward with our budget presentation, Juvenile Court. Carla Gunther, Court Administrator.
Hi.
Hi.
There we go. Thank you. So with respect to the presentation, I think I'm not as tall as Amy. You'll see in there that we've sort of sprinkled in some artwork, and I just want to give tribute to the artwork. The art is done by our residents at our detention facility at the youth center, and they are art installations that are hung in our custody and companionship clinic and in our assessment center. So I'll be talking about both as we proceed, but we're really proud of the work that the kids have done. The Cincinnati Public School art teacher has really sort of led the charge in creating the artwork. So you'll see it throughout the presentation.
Right.
I also just want to say how honored and grateful the court is, Hamilton County Juvenile Court is, to be able to come today and share some of the work that we've been able to do with the funding that the court's received. I also have with me, just like Amy, Steve Rokich and Brian Wolf are from our finance office, so they are also here if we get in the weeds with respect to some of the budget So like Amy, I just wanted to sort of remind us of the court's mission. I think it's also important to highlight that the court has really relied on both our public and private partnerships to engage in continuous improvement efforts, and we'll talk about that reform work that the court's engaged in over the past few years. But it really is to promote this mission, to achieve excellence in the performance of the responsibilities of the Juvenile Court, to provide quality services for the positive development of children, the safety of the community, and then the preservation of the family unit. I broke down a little bit about the court's jurisdiction, so we have complaint types that are in the civil arena, which involve child abuse and neglect or the child protection, and then custody and visitation for unmarried individuals, and then interested third parties like grandparents. And then our paternity and support area, so that sort of rounds out the civil division. And then we have sort of the quasi-civil, quasi-criminal, which is our delinquency and unruly involvement with young people, juvenile traffic. And then we have adult misdemeanor cases in some very limited jurisdictions. So that's really a small percentage of our work. Like Amy, I really want to touch on our work, starting with our staffing, to give you a staffing update. Juvenile Court currently has 287 employees. In this year, we just implemented a new pay plan. So we are really looking at issues around equity in pay and compensation across our court. And then we also looked at how we are faring with the county. We're really lagging behind other county agencies for comparable positions. And then we also took a deep dive across the state to do a comparison. So we are really grateful for your support, as you helped support us with the new pay plan, as well as Jeff Aluto and the Budget Office. They've been really great to work with as we've implemented the new pay structure. With court operations, I also want to talk the numbers with respect to our court operations. And this just sort of highlights last year, some of the work that we've done around the number of hearings. So we've had almost 100,000 hearings that we conducted at Juvenile Court in 2020. We had 16,000, a little over 16,000 new filings, and over 7,000 children were the subjects of those new filings. So we really actually serve more children, because filings go from one year to the next. So we obviously served a lot more than that's represented by that number. We would be remiss to also not talk about the impact of technology. We would be remiss to also not talk about the impact of technology this past year with respect to the pandemic. And so I think we've made some great strides. I know Amy referenced the work that JFS has done. But we've really, on a dime, been able to convert to a virtual platform to conduct a lot of our business. So court hearings have been able to be conducted using remote technology. But we've also been able to keep other areas of the court really functioning. So we've been able to do attainment services remotely. We've done telehealth with counseling services. We've done all of our specialized dockets. So we have a mental health court and a family treatment drug court that we've been able to sustain through some of the virtual technology. We are back doing a lot of in-person hearings with respect to trials. But we really feel like that virtual platform continues to work really well in the child support arena. So we've seen increased participation by families, which has been great. And people aren't missing work. So and the enforcement has improved. So child support's been one area that we intend to continue to use remote technology. And then for pleas and pre-trial hearings as well. In '22, I just want to talk a little bit about what we're doing with technology. So we hope to move to texting and electronic notification of trials to increase attendance and participation in trials, and then to avoid KPAs that are issued for failure to appear. So we're looking forward to that. We also sustained or secured some Supreme Court funding to look at a couple of other areas. So we're doing some redaction work. We've gotten a lot of public records in the last year. So that'll be really helpful. And then also, we are looking at moving from, our current system is one case number, one charge. And so what we want to do is have counts. So we will have charges and counts. It really inflates the arrest data when you look at it at a statewide level because we aren't using a charging and count system. So we're really looking forward with the funding that we received to be able to convert that. So you can really have a good sense of episodes rather than charges. This just highlights the budget and our expenses. So Steve kind of put this together for me. But in 2020, you can see that we haven't fully recovered from where we were in 2006. But I think we've made some great strides in being able to come closer to where we were in 2006. So again, we're pretty grateful to the board and the Budget Office for the support that you've been able to provide the court. And you'll see some of the things that we've been able to accomplish with that support. So I want to first talk about prevention and early intervention. For us, that really is the ticket to preventing youth from becoming further entrenched in our juvenile court system. And so a lot of our efforts have gone to the front-loading. And we'll talk about that in some detail. So I think I mentioned that the clinic is where we house some of the artwork that the kids have created. Our custody and companionship clinic was created in 2017. I think we launched in September of 2017. And for us, finding safe, loving homes, nurturing homes for kids, young children in particular, has been a real priority. And so that's really helped us in our work with children's services. Amy touched on the downslope of children entering foster care. And this is where you're seeing those kids come through to achieve stability. So about 50% of all of our families that move through our custody and companionship clinic have children's services involvement at the time they're coming through. So these are families really coming together to make plans for their own family. And that avoids foster care entrance. So we're really proud of that work. 67% of the families that have come through our clinic are women and individuals of color. So we've really been able to deal with some of the reasons that families are coming further and further involved in our system. And we feel like this is really offering an opportunity for permanency and stability. We also have a help desk. So Legal Aid Society helps us with the clinic. The help desk is, we have clerks who assist families with any questions they might have about custody and companionship, and then also completing the paperwork. We have a whole lot of pro se litigants, low-income families. So our clerks are really able to focus in completing the paperwork that they need to advance their filings. So that's something we're adding a person the end of this year. We also have a mental health court, and I think we've talked about this to the commission before. We have one for deeper-end kids that are on probation. We have a diversion that is still an official mental health court. And we're really thrilled to announce that this year, we are starting an unofficial diversion mental health court. So that's with Lighthouse Youth Services. And we'll be providing functional family therapy in the home, working with the youth and family together. So that's pretty exciting. We also wanted to touch on, going back to sort of this early intervention concept of creating permanency and stability for kids. We have a Hamilton County Family Treatment Drug Court, which is a partnership with Job and Family Services to provide support for those families that are struggling with addiction. And that drug court just got funding through the Supreme Court. It's certified. And we got the funding to be able to support expanded sober support. So whether it's issues around housing or activities that the family might want to engage in, it's those dollars that we can't really access through the government traditionally that we can provide those families that are part of that docket. The other program that I think you all are pretty familiar with is Kids in School Rule, which is a partnership with Cincinnati Public Schools and Legal Aid. And so we continue to really feel like we're disrupting that school-to-prison pipeline by being able to create educational opportunities and success for kids in foster care. So the 10-year graduation rate is 93%. We saw a little bit of dip in the graduation rate during COVID. And so that's something that we're keeping an eye on and concerned about. But overall, it far exceeds the national average of 40 to 60% of kids in foster care graduating from high school. So we're real proud of that work. The other piece is through Georgetown University, we've participated in the Diversion Pathways Program. And one of the things we've been able to do is work with Cincinnati Public Schools, Princeton High School, and Northwest around threats that are made within the school setting. And so we have a threat assessment protocol that we use for juvenile court. And we've been able to take those concepts and work with those districts so that the response isn't a filing in juvenile court, but rather a mobile team that convenes to assess both the threat and what the response and intervention should be. And law enforcement and those school resource officers are a part of that decision-making. And we're really hoping to reduce the number of children charged with any type of school-based threat. The other area that's really new for our court is the Assessment Center that we were opened on 264 William Howard Taft. So we, you can see a picture of this, but it's in a home-like setting right next to Cincinnati Public Schools Board of Education. And there's a small cottage that's in the back of that. So we're using that Assessment Center, and we launched it in December of last year, to really deliver the right approach for the right kid at the right time. So we're not trying to over-touch or have too much involvement with a particular family. But we have a group of screeners and service navigators who are looking at what are the needs and risks for those youth and their families to try to wrap support around those individuals. So we are not the provider of the services. We really are the connector back into the community for those youth and families. We also are working to expand diversion opportunities for lower-level youth charged who are less at risk for further involvement in our court. And so we have a lot of diversion opportunities. One in about 2.75 complaints are actually diverted from formal prosecution. And those are going through our Assessment Center as well. And then our ultimate goal is next year is to have law enforcement, rather than presenting youth who they have arrested at our detention facility, to divert directly to our Assessment Center. So they will not be intaked into our detention facility. So the lower-level offenders, we're hoping to divert directly there. We also have a new, relatively new domestic violence program through Lighthouse Youth Services. And that's been really important because a lot of the kids that are coming through our court who are charged with domestic violence, if they are adjudicated, their second offense is an elevated felony. So we are really trying to provide wraparound support to the youth and the family to prevent that from happening again. So that domestic violence program is relatively new. And then we're also pleased to announce that we just received funding through the Supreme Court of Ohio to have a human trafficking coordinator who can directly work with both the youth at our Assessment Center and then youth on probation to do service coordination for those young people who've survived human trafficking. And next, I just want to talk a little bit about what's happening in juvenile delinquency and some of the challenges and opportunities that we're facing at this point. I want to start with our detention facility. And you can see here, we've graphed from 2016 to 2021 our intakes and admissions into our detention facility. An intake, just to give you some background, is a youth who is potentially arrested by law enforcement or brought by a family member to our detention facility for intake. So admissions do not equal, our intakes do not equal admission. We have lots of youth who are presented at intake at our detention facility, and we work really hard to divert those youth. About 63% of the youth over this time period were diverted from admission into our detention facility. So admission is literally, they spent the night in our detention facility. One night, and they'll count as an admission. What I also think, and Amy referenced this in her presentation, is we do have a small group of children who are in our detention facility, and we feel like they should not be housed in that setting. So we roughly have about, at any given time, around 10 kids who are really struggling with pretty significant behavioral health or developmental disabilities and show some type of aggression. So they're there because of aggression. And we talked about some of those kids who've had psychiatric hospitalizations and acted out. And so that's a group of kids we really want to work on to find an alternative solution. And so Jeff, I've had a chance to talk to Jeff Aludo. And we're going to have a representative from the Board of County Commissioners, I think Lisa Webb, is going to be on that work group along with JFS and Children's Hospital to try to design some type of crisis alternative that includes both placement and services for that population so we can avoid their detention stay. So we're looking at different things. We don't really have it all ironed out. We have some empty beds in our detention facility. There are some challenges with that, and we have to sort of think that through. But we want to look at where can we get some sustainable money? So not necessarily looking to the general fund, but what are the other funding opportunities that could support that kind of crisis intervention? Finally, I think I would be remiss to not talk about the uptick in violence that we've experienced in our community. You all are familiar with that. When you look at the murder charges, you can see there's a dramatic increase in the number of children charged with murder. We had, this year, year-to-date, we've had 15 kids charged with 30 counts of murder or attempted murder. So that uptick in violence has had a great impact on how we serve kids. And it's also impacted our detention facility in a very significant way. And I'll talk about that in a minute. All of this, as you can see, coincides with the pandemic. I don't think we're in a position to say that it was caused by it. But I think the social isolation and the pressures that have faced families and children have faced clearly play some role. In this uptick of violence, I want to talk about sort of the trends we're seeing because the next step is really how do we intervene in a different way? The trends, we have girls for the first time that are part of that population of children charged with murder. We're also seeing younger children who are charged. So the youngest in our detention facility today is 13. We also are identifying that a history of child welfare involvement is a common theme. That may not necessarily be new. But 73% of the kids that are charged with murder have a child welfare history. And about 33% of those kids had an abuse, neglect, or dependency complaint filed. The other thing that is peculiar is about half the kids that are charged with murder had no significant prior court involvement. So the highest level of offense they may have had is a misdemeanor and some with no offenses. So that's a pretty interesting trend. Usually when we look at it, you can see that the kids are just getting more and more entrenched in our system, but that has not been the case this year. The other thing that we saw kind of leading up to those murder charges that you saw is we saw a really dramatic increase in 2020 of felonious assaults. So we saw the rise quickly on a felonious assault. And then this year, we saw the murder. So the trend in violence is quite concerning. The court's response, I think one of the things that we're looking at, we pulled a community task force together through the support of the council of state governments. So we have a whole array of public and private partners who are at the table working with us. Our original intent was to look at how can we further reduce the number of youth in our detention facility? And we've sort of pivoted at this point to look at how can we stop the violence? So we're going to bring that partnership together to take a look at that as well. And then finally, I just want to talk a little bit about our detention population. So we've talked about those charges and the severity of charges. 60% of the kids who are in our detention facility are in our detention facility on a gun charge or have a history of a gun charge. So we're seeing kids with more and more serious offenses. And that's impacted both the length of stay and the daily population. So you'll see that rise. So even though we have less kids in detention, you see the length of stay and the daily population increasing. The other area that's really affected our detention facility pretty dramatically are those kids that are bound over or transferred to the adult court for trial. But they still remain in our detention facility until there's a conviction. So they aren't transferred to the sheriffs. So the other thing that's been happening to try to combat some of the violence that we've seen, our probation department for the last few years has engaged in a statewide effort to transform the way we deliver probation services to the kids and families in our community. And we're trying to support young people to achieve positive behavior and achieve long-term success. So our probation team has worked really hard to do that. They moved sort of from a more correctional approach to a more social work approach. So we've seen that evolve in our workforce in the way that we deliver services. Our probation officers are receiving state-of-the-art training in December around de-escalation strategies. So we have consultants coming in to provide that training. And then we're also going to have a number of our staff become train the trainers so we can sustain that moving forward. So we're pretty excited about that opportunity. And then I talked a little bit about the task force. We're really bringing the community in to analyze and help us identify strategies for intervening because we think it's going to take the entire community to really change the trajectory for these kids that are entering our system. And then I just want to highlight finally, a couple of programs that are really designed to deal with some of our deep-end kids. So we have the Youth Advocate Program, which we received some funding through an endowment so to bring Youth Advocate Program into our community. They've worked a lot in Chicago and a lot of other urban jurisdictions. And this is really intensive wraparound support for high-need kids who are at high risk for placement. And that's been great. It's 24/7 wraparound support using cognitive behavioral therapy. And Youth Advocate Program is hiring people in the community to work with these young people. So they're from the community. They're located in Westwood. We kind of took a look at where are most of our kids coming from? And so Westwood was a high priority for us. So we're really pleased with the work that Youth Advocate Program has done with our families and the outcomes they've been able to achieve nationally in preventing kids from recidivating into the juvenile justice system. The other area that we've worked on is we have a gender-specific team that works with young girls. So that'll dovetail really nicely with the human trafficking coordinator that we're bringing in. But we've also been able to provide trauma-responsive interventions for those girls that are part of that GEMS group. And then our probation officers also run a group with those kids. And that continued to occur throughout COVID. And then finally, we've talked about taking care of our kids. But I think it's also important that we really take care of our staff. I talked about those murder charges that increased. And I think it's also important to note that a number of our young people who were on probation were the victims of those murders. So it's really taken a toll on our staff. And we brought in folks to work with our staff around the secondary trauma they've experienced because it's taken a toll on our workforce as well. So that gives you a little bit of overview of some of the initiatives. And I'm certainly open to any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you so much for your presentation. We'll open it up for Vice President Reese.
Yes. Thank you for your presentation. I do have just a couple of questions.
Sure.
But some of these came in, they saw our agenda, and they'd asked me. Ozzie Davis, who works in the community, particularly Avondale, and does a lot with young men. He had asked the question about, I know we don't, I guess, own Hillcrest anymore, but do we do any contracting with them or?
Sure. So Hillcrest, we still have a strong partnership with Hillcrest. Obviously, years ago, when the county decided, we were going through the economic crisis, we privatized Hillcrest. So it's now operated by rites of passage. So we continue to have children placed at Hillcrest. It's really important because we need local residential placements for kids that are involved in the juvenile justice system. And that really is generally our go-to placement. So there are, and I think there are over, I think we're running right around 23 or 24 kids at Hillcrest. or twenty-four kids at Hillcrest today. So that still exists. And then a lot of those kids, as they exit back, receive community re-entry work through Lighthouse Youth Services as part of our case management that we provide ongoing.
Where in this budget is Hillcrest? Do we have a contract with them, or how do you do that?
So we contract for a per diem, but that is generally covered through, we receive money for children, from Children's Services for placements, and then we also pull down 4E federal funding to support those placements. So any of our residential placements that we access, and we have other kids that aren't at Hillcrest, so they might have specialized needs around sexual offending behavior, they might have cognitive limitations that would preclude them from going to Rites of Passage. And so those young people are placed in private residential settings through the court. We take care and control and facilitate that placement, and that's funded through 4E and Medicaid.
Okay. The other question comes from Jerry Baker in Evendale.
Okay.
And I know we're talking about operations, but I, and maybe Jeff may want to jump in on this, but Jerry Baker was very concerned about the, our juvenile building. He said, we would come down there, his thing was, can we get a power wash on it? But I know that we're working, or you are working on something with the building. Can you talk to that? Because Jerry Baker wanted me to make sure that that was asked.
Sure. I don't know much about what County Facilities is doing, but that will be great, and maybe Jeff knows, so.
So the specific question about the power washing, I can check on that, is what we're doing, because, yes, some of those buildings, even the courthouse across the street, starts to get that dark staining on it, with the type of stone that it is. As the board is aware, we have several of our buildings, Eight Hundred Broadway, which is where Juvenile Court is, being one of them, where we have some significant facade upgrades that we have to do anyway.
Roof problems, yeah.
So the question is, which one do we do first? And if we're going to be moving forward with a facade upgrade project, probably do that at the same time so that we don't cause any additional problems by power washing the facade when it's still in need of repairs. But I'll check with Facilities and see where we are on the, just the general cleaning side of it.
There's been major roof repairs, too, that they've done in the last year or so as well, and that continues to be a struggle in an old building. So that's definitely an issue. Detention's pretty good. They're going to do a big camera upgrade, so that's something that's on the horizon with a new budget. And then Jeff's been great about working with the court to think about different ways. That assessment center I showed you is also a very old house. There's been a lot of deferred maintenance there, and I think one of the things that Facilities has done a good job of trying to upgrade it to the best of their ability, but we still need to make it handicap accessible. So we're using the cottage for any individuals who have disabilities, but that's an area where we really need some upgrades. There's some crumbling steps and some things we need to do to make that handicap accessible. But I think we're going to look, is there other opportunities for funding outside the board? So I think we're trying to look at that. We did do a capital grant through the state, and that was deferred during COVID, so we're hoping that money sort of frees up again.
Great. And then my other question, you had mentioned inclusion and equity, and certainly a lot of the children that you serve are African-American children. And so within your organization, you mentioned that you guys are working on inclusion, equity as it relates to promotion and positions. Can you talk about that? I know that's something that has been important to our board, to look at everything in terms of making sure that we have a climate that is reflective of the diversity. So can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, it's important for our workforce in the way that we serve the kids and families that come before our court. So in our workforce, about forty-three percent of our workforce are individuals of color. And, you know, that's something we continue to prioritize and try to make sure that we have a good representation within our workforce, because you mentioned it, most of our families are individuals of color. And one of the things we've spent a lot of time in with our court is looking at the data. So as, we can't always control what comes in our front door, but as young people and their families move through our system, are we treating them equitably? So that's something we really focus on a lot in our data. So for instance, in detention, we talked about detention, eighty-three percent of the kids coming into our detention facility are kids of color, but we're diverting eighty-four percent of the kids that we divert are kids of color. So we're trying to make sure that there's an even-handed and fair approach as kids move through. The other thing that we've been doing, our probation department just completed a race undivided curriculum, and that's something we want to spread throughout the course, is making sure we're looking at race equity inclusion throughout our system. So we're looking at that training ongoing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for being here, Carla. I just want to highlight a couple of things. So I think your efforts to divert kids from entering some of the facilities is a good move. I want to compliment you on that.
Thanks.
We're using the same strategy with the Addiction Response Coalition in trying to divert people from the justice system, and it sounds like you're doing pretty much the same thing with the youth.
Exactly.
So, yeah, thank you for doing that, and I think we all need to kind of make that extra effort to put kids and adults in the most appropriate places for them to eventually succeed and achieve.
I agree.
I wanted to dig in a little bit, and the slide's up here, I think. Is this the Westwood program that you referred to? I'm just not familiar with that. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. So the Georgetown University Center for Juvenile Justice Reform came together with the Youth Advocate Program. They got a group of dollars for an endowment to be able to bring sort of these, and it's a very intensive program, into our community. So we secured those dollars, I think it was around $400,000, to bring Yap into our community. They hired a local director, so Nate Led, if any of you worked with Nate Led, he had been at Beach Acres and involved in the fatherhood program. So he is the director. We did look, and Judge Cross, who's now across the street, but was in juvenile court, was our coordinator when we first planned and designed this project. And so one of the things we looked at is we did a zip code analysis of our kids that are active on probation. Block Ministry serves a lot of our kids in Price Hill, so we didn't want to overlap that, but we looked at what other areas are we seeing a lot of kids that maybe aren't getting the intensive service they need. So that zip code analysis got us to Westwood. So they secured space in Westwood and then began to hire wraparound workers. So these are advocates that are working directly with the young people and their families. They're working on all kinds of issues. So for instance, we have one young person who had two siblings that were active with our court, and they really opened up on all three, and one of them was a girl. The original intent was to serve young men, but they provided advocates and mentors for those young people, and they're working with them to keep them in school. We also have a subsidized employment opportunity, so they're training with job skills and then placing those young people with employers in the community where they reside. And then they're also working directly with the family to build the family's capacity to be able to manage some of the behavioral challenges these kids exhibit. So these are kids charged generally with very high-level offenses that are really on the cusp of going into placement. So they receive twenty-four-seven crisis intervention, and those advocates are responding all night and on weekends. So we've seen reduced recidivism. It's not perfect. Like I said, these are kids that are gun-involved, and they have a lot of criminogenic behavior that they exhibit, but that wraparound intensive support within their own community is really making a difference, and we're seeing that in some of the outcomes we've been able to achieve. So we've had just about thirty kids go through that program. They started during the pandemic, so it was terrible timing, but they really did pivot and do a lot of remote work until they could get back in the households. So now they're back in the households, working directly with those kids and families.
Can you keep us up to date as far as the data that you're collecting there?
I can.
Because I think it's really important that we understand that. It sounds like a great program. Is there literally a storefront in Westwood?
Yeah, there's a, they have a house, they're in a house.
Oh, okay.
So in Westwood. Yeah, I'd be happy to share the address. And then I can also forward, we have a lot of information about some of the national data they've been able to achieve. So it really is prevention work, so they're not becoming further entrenched in their juvenile justice system, but they're also not picking up adult criminal charges as well as they transition out. A lot of these kids are right at the transition age. So some of the longitudinal studies they've been able to have are great. And so, and those kids are not recidivating. We do have a dedicated probation officer, Mike Brock, who's working directly with the Yap staff and Nate Led and his team. So it really streamlines the communication and coordination that's occurring as well. So we're very happy about it.
One last thing related to Hillcrest. So I'm wondering, it's been a while since we talked about Hillcrest.
Sure, sure.
And so I'm wondering, I have not asked recently for any kind of information related to that facility. Do we do annual audits related to Hillcrest?
So they did a facility audit very recently because they're upgrading the fire alarm system. So I know that that building did an annual audit. I don't, I think there is a provision in the contract for that to occur, and I don't think it has happened other than the facility part of it. Now, obviously, we pay a lot of attention to the data of what our kids are doing there. So that's something we do monitor very carefully and look at. So by audit, do you mean the facility itself?
I mean the financial, a financial audit.
They did one, was it about a couple of years ago, I would say, right? I know it was primarily around the school. I think you'd raised some issues around the school when we produced that.
It's really, what I'm getting at is the amount of resource going to educate the kids at the facility. I mean, we've got kids at the facility that we contract for, and we contract for certain services, and I'm just wondering how we're tracking it and if we can have access to any audit that has been done recently related to the kids and the services that are being provided at Hillcrest.
Sure. I'm happy to ask for that, and I think Hillcrest can provide that for us. There's also a new director out there, and so there's been a heavy focus on improving also some of the clinical interventions that are there, so they've done a nice job of that. And so we've been pretty pleased with the school component, but the clinical component, we really feel like there needs to be more support for some of the families while the kids are there. And so that's been something they've really bolstered. And then some of the trauma work. So those are areas that we've tried to prioritize in our relationship with Hillcrest, because we do think that there was room for improvement, and we're pretty pleased with the response so far. But I'm happy to get you an audit with respect to the school and any other areas you might want.
And maybe it's a juxtaposition between the contract that we have with them and the amount of money that we're sending in support of the kids and how those dollars are being spent. That's really what I'm after.
That I can for sure do.
Okay.
Yeah, that's easy. So, yep.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of things. And Nate Led is awesome in the VLE program.
He is awesome, yeah.
I'm sure it's going to be a great one along with his staff. I just really want to compliment you on your creative thinking and outside-of-the-box thinking to deal with these children as they come. You can't deal with them the same way. And so all these programs are indicative of you guys looking outside of what we normally give them for services, so I really appreciate that. When you said the new position for human trafficking.
Yeah, we're interviewing now.
That is awesome, because it is rampant in this area. We don't talk about it a lot, but I'm just really happy about that.
The Y has been a great partner with us on that as well, so they do a nice job in working with those young people.
Great. And you said earlier you have two-hundred-and-eighty-seven employees. I just wanted to know, is that your full complement, or you have some vacancies?
We have vacancies, yeah. Youth Center vacancies are, which is our detention facility, are the area where we're doing heavy recruitment to try to bring folks in. We did a media blitz, a social media blitz, and a media blitz to try to bring folks in. We did garner a lot of applicants, just like JFS described. Our folks that are exiting are exiting at the same rate we're bringing folks in. So we really do need to do that, particularly when I talked about the increase in the number of kids that are in our detention facility due to these serious offenses and the fact that their length of stay is protracted. So that's a real concern, and that's a huge priority. We are looking at, we've been in communication with some of the universities to try to access graduates in the criminal justice program, so that's an area. And we are looking at part-time, because we're hearing more and more the workforce is interested in part-time work rather than full-time work. And so that's something, it's a hard thing to do when you're scheduling in a twenty-four-seven facility, but we're open to trying to think about how that might work. And then we're also, we have an individual within our Youth Center who is working to bring that message into the faith-based community to assist with recruitment efforts in a more non-traditional way.
Okay. So how many slots would you say you need to fill?
I think at the Youth Center, they need a little over thirty, maybe thirty-three, I think, vacancies. So it's a pretty good number.
Okay.
And that's something we're really working on, because ultimately, we think we can bring down overtime costs if we can get fully staffed. But again, it's very difficult. The other thing with COVID is we have COVID units, so when a kid's intaked into our detention facility, we are having to put them on a medical unit for two weeks until they have a negative test result. And so our pediatrician, which is from Children's Hospital, Dr. Chandler, has really helped us sort of navigate that, but we've maintained that because so many of our kids are not vaccinated yet. And Children certainly tries to assist the families with that, but there is some general reluctance still, so.
Thank you. And you also mentioned earlier that the Supreme Court had funded you in three different areas, and I was just wondering, do they approach you? Do you have a grant writer? How did that happen?
So we have a person who's not a grant writer but has developed expertise in grant writing. So that's been great. So we've gone after some of the specialized docket money and then some of the technology money and then the human trafficking position. So those are time-limited, so it's usually a two- to three-year duration, but oftentimes we're able to see the benefits and then reallocate existing resources to help compensate for that.
Great. And lastly, I noticed you had on here your annual expenses, but I didn't see anything about revenue or what your total operating budget is for, and could you tell me that?
Yeah, so Steve can help. I think it's a little over thirty million dollars. And so we also have a lot of grant funding. Not quite a third of our funding comes from either other levy dollars, so sort of the healthcare levy dollars, or the dependency department, abuse neglect and dependencies through the Children's Services levy. And then we pull down federal funding, both 4E and 4D, for our youth emplacement and then 4D for child support. And then we have a lot of grant dollars. So from Reclaim Ohio, we're pulling down grant dollars to provide targeted support for some of the services I talked about. And then also this year, we've been able to get back into the general reclaim allocation. They look, it's really a formula, so they're looking at the number of adjudications on felony offenses offset by the number of commitments you make to the Department of Youth Services. With our commitments declining, it impacts funding, obviously, so.
So can I get a printout of that or something? Because it's almost a...
Sure, we have a general summary.
Yeah, we see expenses.
I'd be happy to share with you. Yeah, we can do expenses and revenue for sure.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I think it's in the original submission, but we're happy to forward that.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to follow up Commissioner Dreehouse's request, and I'd like to also get a, will you give us a copy of the audit?
From Hillcrest.
Copy of the, also, the agreement, I think, because I'm new, so I just like to...
Say that again.
The agreement as well.
Sure, sure. The contract I forwarded to Mr. Aludo, and there's a, there's two parts. So there's a contract for the per diem rates, and then there's a licensing agreement. So there are two separate agreements that are executed. I believe they remain in effect till 2023, is that...
Twenty-twenty-three, I think, yeah. We can forward those all to the board.
Yes, we have both of those, but happy to give that. And then happy to forward the audit. I'll contact our OP on that.
Okay. And then following up on President Dumas's request.
Sure.
Then there'll be a line item in terms of positions and so forth, because we're just trying to, as you look at the expenses.
Yeah, I think Steve has sent a lot of that over to the Budget Office, but happy to forward whatever you need.
Okay. I don't know if we have it from John, because we're also looking at personnel, just making sure we're not top-heavy in any of our departments.
Sure.
My last thing I do want to highlight, you said, I don't want it to go over lightly, we're all concerned about the increase in violence and seeing that these are juveniles. Something that you said was interesting to me. You said the majority that you're seeing with the juveniles are people, juveniles who didn't have a prior but end up with a gun in the hand and...
About forty-seven percent.
Is there any studies we're doing to find out how they're getting these guns? Because, I mean, I want to take down the people that's putting the guns in the juvenile's hands. I mean, if we could stop that, that would be the supplier, if you will.
Yeah.
Have we, are you working on any programs there, talking? Because it's odd to have a child or juvenile who's never been in trouble at all in some cases, and then all of a sudden a gun in their hands and committing the most egregious act that any human being could ever do, which is murder.
Sure.
So, I didn't know if you had anybody studying that or?
So, not in a formal way. Certainly, our probation department, that's a common inquiry that they make, just like you are. I think the information that we get is some kids start carrying guns because they feel unsafe in their communities. So, that's sort of the consistent theme we hear from young people. And then some type of altercation ensues and they end up using that gun. So, they might first start using it for protection and then it leads to use for other reasons. So, that's the difficulty. I think there's a lot of access within the community to guns. And so, we're also seeing this across different communities, so it's not as isolated as it once was. So, it is a challenge. Obviously, the majority of the kids are within the city of Cincinnati, but we're still seeing it in some of the outlying areas as well. So, I think it's, you know, we don't have a great answer for that, but I think, and kids are pretty guarded about sharing that information with us as well. But our probation department works really hard to try to get to the bottom of that. And yeah, because they are working so much with kids that are gun-involved, they're doing some of that crisis work and responding. So, they're getting kids who come forward and say, "Hey, my friend has a gun and I'm feeling unsafe." And they're responding on the scene to try to figure out a good, safe plan for that young person so they don't get involved in that kind of activity. So, that kind of pro-social activities coupled with a dedicated adult who's helping look out for those young people seems to be a pretty good recipe for responding to that. So, they have someone safe they can confide in.
Thank you. Yeah, just as we're doing the mental health component.
Yeah.
Maybe that's something, I don't know what, but be interested to know, you're right, it's hitting different ethnicities and countywide. And so, I think based on that data you gave, I think that's something we need to really look. A kid who's never gotten in trouble but then has a gun and commits this type of act.
It's really surprising.
It's something, I don't know what it is, but would love to get that data.
Yeah, and that's not something we've seen before. So, that's really new to this population, I would say.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I could just briefly, just a question of the board. Just looked in the electronic version of the budget. I think the court has budgeted 252 positions for 2022. Carlos, does that sound correct? It's up 2.95 FTEs from last year. And I don't have the breakdown in terms of detention center versus juvenile probation, etc., so maybe that's something we can get to the board.
About a hun, I think it's right around a third in our youth center and then 200 or throughout the rest of the court in probation. Clerk's office, security, magistrates, clerks, case management.
And you, thank you, Jeff. But you brought up something I was wondering about as we looked at the expenses. The reason why, didn't really go up a lot from 2013 to 2020. And you're doing the Zooms, which helps on your security and personnel that would have to normally be in the courtroom and stuff.
It has. I mean, that's really helped. And then I think one of the things we were worried about, about the virtual technology is we would lose families in that process. And it's really been surprising that I think we've seen an increase in family participation through the remote technology. And people can stay in their jobs and not risk losing employment while they can either attend a hearing for themselves or their children. So, it's been great. There are some downsides with respect to trials, particularly serious trials in a delinquency matter or in a child protection proceeding where we're looking at the possibility of terminating parental rights. So, those trials, we've reserved for in-person. But a lot of the work can be done remotely and I feel like our workforce has really adapted well to that.
Great.
It also helps the other partners. So, Children's Services doesn't have to send their social workers over to court and wait until a hearing's called. People can sit in a waiting room, sit in their office and do other work. So, I really think it's created efficiencies throughout the system.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you all. Take care, thanks. And I'll forward the stuff that you wanted.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the 2022 levy review. Lisa Webb, Senior Policy Manager. Welcome, Lisa.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, I have a short presentation, but feel free to interrupt at any point if there are questions along the way. I've been working on the county levies for 13 years at this point. So, I feel like a lot of it tends to be general knowledge for me, so it may or may not be. So, absolutely interrupt as needed. Hamilton County Tax Levy Review Committee, if you can hit for the next slide. Sorry, Leslie. The county commissioners oversee the voted tax levies for all, that appear on the tax bill for Hamilton County property owners. It's the policy of the commissioners to create the balance between the needs of funding for various levy agencies and the tax burden on the county home and business owners. To this end, the Hamilton County Commissioners created the Tax Levy Review Committee back in 1996. And since that time, the Tax Levy Review Committee has reviewed and made recommendations on all county property tax levies under the authority of the commissioners. The current tax levies we have right now, and those are the amounts of revenue each of those levies generate in order from largest to smallest, is Children's Services, which was just approved by the voters in November, Developmental Disability Services, $75 million, the Indigent Care Levy at $40 million, Mental Health at $35, Senior Services at $26, and the Cincinnati Zoo at 7.2, and the Family Services and Treatment Levy at $6.4 million a year. The levies are all on a five-year renewal cycle at this point. There was a period that Indigent Care was on a three-year cycle for a few years, but that has changed. And now, they're all back on a five-year cycle. If you can see from this, this year, obviously, was Children's Services. Next year is what I call the big year of every five years. We have Indigent Care on the ballot as well as Mental Health and Senior Services. So, it is a huge social services-related levy year for the county.
I'm sorry, Madam President?
Lisa, do you have a clicker up there?
Oh, I do, thank you. I guess I'm not charged.
Very good.
Thank you, I didn't even see it. I'm going to go through each of those three levies that's up for this year, or next year, excuse me, with a brief overview of some of the key points within those levies. If you have any questions on each of the individual levies, just go ahead and ask. The Indigent Care Levy, while not the largest levy in the county, certainly has the largest number of agencies involved within it. The levy supports hospital services for indigent, including those at University Hospital and Children's Hospital, as well as providing for the sheriff's inmate medical contract and related staffing and juvenile court's medical contract with Children's Hospital. It provides for homeless medical services at the adult shelters, small amount of funding for the Off the Streets Program, some funding for probate court medical services related to their mental health clients. Oh, that's duplicated, apologize. Mental Health and Recovery Services Board Treatment Services. The Mental Health Levy covers the mental health portion of Mental Health and Recovery Services local levy funding. This levy focuses on the treatment services specifically, so substance abuse and alcohol treatment services, as well as three programs within public health. The TB Control Program, which the county is required to provide bloodborne pathogens, and Oral Care Initiative. Both of those last two were at, were new to the levy cycle in this last five years. As well, Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition, there's some additional funding for treatment services also. The Alternative Interventions for Women Program out of probation and the Charitable Pharmacy Services currently funded with St. Vincent de Paul. I apologize, that is extremely small, but I will read the highlights for you on it. The keys from this, and this is actually from your budget document, is that the Indigent Care Levy is a 4.07 mil levy and costs property owners just over four, just under $44 for every $100,000 home. The levy brings in about, like I said, $40 million a year and supports all of the programs in that previous slide. Key portions of the review coming up will be specifically looking at the Sheriff's Inmate Medical Program. That contract was up for bid this year and the sheriff's office is currently reviewing the proposals that they received on that. Are there any specific questions related to the Indigent Care Levy?
Yes.
Yeah?
On the, the partners, or you listed as partners, but I guess these are the people that receive the money?
Mm-hmm. These are all programs funded through the levy, yes.
Okay, who decides those programs?
Well, they, these are the current programs. They are a part of the levy review process. So, that when the Tax Levy Review Committee comes in and works with their consultant, they will review all current programs and then make recommendations to the commissioners if there's anything that should or shouldn't be changed within allocations or programs. Additionally, especially with the Indigent Care Levy, we seem to have a lot of community partners that will come forward and ask to be considered as a part of the levy as funding is available. Those partners can either approach the commissioners or approach the Tax Levy Committee. We've seen it sort of handled both ways. A lot of the approaches to the commissioners end up coming through the committee as well. The committee will make the recommendations, but all funding decisions lay with the commissioners. And the commissioners have it sometimes fully endorsed the committee's recommendations. They've made changes to those recommendations and they've also changed services that would be included. I would state that in this levy, aside from county programs, county, as in within county departments and university and Children's Hospital, any of the other services out there are all subject to competitive bid once the levy is approved by voters. And I run that process beginning shortly after the November election in each of these. Specifically, charitable pharmacy, homeless medicals and homeless medical services are bid out within this levy.
Okay, yes, I just wanted to, once we go with these.
Mm-hmm.
And, for example, charitable pharmacy, then do we get a report what they do?
Absolutely. Once the contract's awarded, we, or once the bid is awarded, we enter into a contract and all of our contracts have specific outcomes. Some come specifically from the Tax Levy Committee and the consultants' recommendations or if the commissioners have anything additional to include. I know that specifically provide, they provide an annual update to the county every year on the number of prescriptions they fill, the number of county residents they've served and the leveraging that they've been able to provide with the county dollars. It's $150,000 a year and I believe they leverage it for several million dollars in prescriptions.
Okay, I just, the reason I asked, I had asked the administrator when I first got here about a discount program for Hamilton County residents for pharmacy. And so, I didn't know we have a charitable, we already have a charitable.
We partner with St. Vincent de Paul, which is the only free pharmacy available in the, I believe in the tri-state area, but certainly in the county. And so, the individuals are able to come there and they've got the income qualifications and they partner with a lot of the drug companies to get their, the free drugs from the drug companies and their pharmacists are able to meet with the clients, assist them in treatment plans and get them their prescriptions, all but narcotics.
Okay.
A lot of diabetes medications are served that way, which is extremely helpful, I'm sure, for the community.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
No problem.
You can go forward, thanks.
The Mental Health Levy is $35 million. It's 2.99 mils and costs a property owner just over $42 a year. The Mental Health Levy, as well as the Indigent Care Levy, have not been increased since prior to 2007. I just make that note as we go through these. This levy, if you'll look at the, it provides services through the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board completely. All funding goes right to them. What I would note on here, and this is a known thing that came up during our review five years ago, but we're seeing it happen, and that is that the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board is utilizing their fund balance to manage the levy's available resources without reducing services. So, what you see in the last few years, if you look from 2020 to '21 and we're estimating down to '23, you can. This review.
Well, my question would be if the county.
Their. For the expect. And they're. If that 2.99 mils is going to be. What they want to. That's that. This was an increase to your population specifically. This is homeless respite. All three of these services were put out to bid. Homeless respite, which is provided for the center, by the Center for Respite Care, specifically for homeless individuals that need additional care following leaving hospitalization. Patient Navigation, which is provided by a company called CareStar, and they've partnered largely with St. Vincent de Paul and their charitable pharmacy. So, when seniors come in to get their medications, they're providing an additional level of assistance through the Senior Services Levy to coordinate their care and make sure those seniors are continuing their medications and continuing all of their medical follow-up appointments and anything, any other services that they need when they're presenting themselves with St. Vincent de Paul. As well as Care for Caregivers, which is our newest program. I believe the first cohort for that program was launching in October, so just last month. And that is providing educational services to caregivers of seniors so that they can make sure that they're really, they're taking care of their own health as well as the health of the senior that they're providing care for. The Senior Services Levy is 1.29 mils and it costs the property owner just under $35 per $100,000 home. Are there any specific questions related to that levy?
I have a question.
Yeah?
So, on the senior levy, I know we do this, once you have the levy and it's five years, do we have any flexibility, if you will, when something comes up, like a pandemic? I mean, five years ago, we didn't have a pandemic. Now, we got a pandemic. Senior services, if someone would say, "We got a senior service," you know, levy, and I think.
And then what types of programming would be recommended by the consultants, the Tax Levy Committee and then the commissioners to advance? But we have done programs midway through levy cycles. So, the levies will have a funding plan that's approved by the commissioners with a budget for each of the programs. But those budgets always have some carryover balance to make sure that the levy can maintain that fund balance and be available in case things do change and we need to adjust dollars and contract amounts throughout that five-year period. Five years is a pretty long time in terms of figuring out and solidifying budgets. So, there are avenues available for new programming. The caution that I always make to everyone, though, is we'd have to check with our prosecutor's office, one, to make sure it falls into the levy and two, to see if it's subject to competitive bid and if so, what avenues we need to make sure we go through on that, just to safeguard everyone.
The reason I ask that is today, you're testifying in the, the concept of a budget hearing. That's, I guess, that's why we're talking today. And I'm looking for ways that we have to turn in, each of us. We've been asked to turn in by the president, Board President. Our changes, recommendations, not just add-ons, might be some subtractions. And I have been saying, senior citizens need help right now. So, I'm looking for a way to help them because they have to pay the gas and electric if they want to keep it on. They have to pay the water bill if they want to keep it going. And we have developed some programs for homeowners. We've developed some programs for renters. But I want something specific for senior citizens who I think have given their due to our society and, you know, they're retired and nothing's going up. Everything's going up except their money. So, I was, I'm just looking for a creative way to submit in this budget some direct help for senior citizens. I know Commissioner Dreyhouse has talked about the legacy component, which I'm supportive of, but also, they need a little, they need a little cash to help with the gas and electric because now they've got approval to go higher. And so, I just wanted to know if that would fit in here or if it would not fit in here. I might have to look somewhere else. But I'm specifically looking for something additional based on the pandemic that can help our seniors.
What I would say is based on the Veteran Services Commission and their program, which does provide that level of assistance to veterans and their widows in utility assistance and rental assistance, mortgage assistance, that there would certainly be some, sorry, I'm blanking on the terminology, but some precedent within this levy that those types of services have been funded in the past on it.
Okay, and then maybe Council on Aging already is doing a number of things for us. If something could possibly, we have to look at it, but add it to where they could help maybe serve. If something could possibly, we have to look at it, but add it to where they could help maybe service it, I'm not sure, but.
Well, and specifically, this levy funds their elderly services program, which is to keep seniors in homes, whatever they can do medically and in retrofits for the homeowners. But what they can do to keep them in homes, which goes, appears to go to that core mission as well.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking at their utilities. Because I had a couple come to the bus.
I'm sure.
They're on canes and wheelchairs, and I just said, wow, we need to think of something that we can do for them. Thank you.
Madam President, if I could just briefly, and this applies to all commissioners because as we are going through these, the budget process, there is continual dialogue amongst the board in these sessions where we're talking about different angles on the budget, et cetera. So when we hear that, we then typically will start doing some research at the staff level to see how we might be able to help facilitate that. So on that particular question, I can say that Lisa and I have had conversations with Kevin Holt as well over at JFS to try to look for what are some sources we have, whether it's the levy? Is it the ERAP program, given the continued evolution and leniency in the regulations that we're seeing, et cetera? So I can't say that we've completely finalized that. The discussion today is a little bit more of a continuation of that. But we'll continue to come back to the board as we finalize the budget process with some ideas to the degree there's ultimately policy direction on it, we could reach out to the appropriate levy partners to help implement.
Can I follow up on, just kind of generally related to, really two things. The customer assistance program through MSD is for seniors and for water and sewer bills. So I, I hope that that information is available at the bus. If it's not, we can certainly make sure that it is available. We've, we did that, I don't know how many, a few years ago. But it is directed towards those, that very population you're referring to. So MSD gave us flyers, it's been a while back, but those would be really helpful to hand out at the bus. The other thing is just the context of talking about these levies. So as you point out, there are seven that are under the control of the county commissioners. And I just want to lend a little bit of a historical lens to this because we have, since I've been here, tried really hard to make sure that these levies are, you know, held down as low as possible because of the increase in property taxes on our citizens and other, other ways and other venues. And so we've been very careful about which levies have seen increases and which ones have been held flat. So the two that received increases were children's services and senior services. And so as you say, we tried to get creative with the levies that were receiving the increase to see if there were ways to, you know, if indigent care is not getting an increase, we know there's need there. We heard it through the public hearings. The, the public hearings were packed. We heard all kinds of things about the needs in the community. And so we tried to be more creative with senior services because that's where the increase was going, knowing that the need was relative to indigent care. So the indigent seniors then were captured through that levy to, so that we stay in the parameters of the levy. So I hope moving forward, and I know the TLRC is doing this, looking at these levies in the same way to say, you know, if we are trying to hold property taxes as low as possible for the citizens and yet we need to recognize the increased needs in some of these areas, how can we think through all seven levies at one time to say, well, if not this levy, then maybe this levy? Or how do we provide some relief perhaps in the indigent care levy to allow for an increase in something else, right? That they provide. So I, I want to thank the TLRC for their work. It's, it can be grueling, I know. But I, I hope that there will be this really kind of overarching approach to levies in general as we continue to move through these cycles. Thank you.
That, that segues very well into my next slide, but talking about the work plan for the TLRC and what they're looking at right now. And one of the biggest pieces that they have not wrapped up yet this year is a review of the tax levy policy. The levy policy was last approved by the commissioners in '09. And a lot has changed since then, but the policy has not. The policy still references an inflation scale in calculation of the increases, which we have not used in the last over 10 years. In fact, that specific inflation scale no longer exists by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. But they're updating some language, and as a part of that, what they're looking at is looking at the levies more collectively and how they figure out how the commissioners are going to direct the TLRC when it comes to those issues. And looking at commission priorities, when we have, say, 10 various agencies come forward with program ideas for the indigent care levy, making sure that what the TLRC is looking at in the recommendations that they give reflect back on what the commission priorities are in a given year or two. So I will move on to that slide right now. The work plan, the last follow-ups, is the Cincinnati Zoo midpoint report, which was completed this summer. Just has yet to make it to the commissioners, so that'll be forthcoming very soon, as well as that policy review and those recommendations to the commissioners. We're looking to advance that in, in January to the tax, to the commissioners so that they, you, all three of you can take a look at that and provide insight and possibly even advance a new levy policy directing the TLRC in advance of this upcoming review. We also have, in addition to the 2022 reviews, there are two midpoint reviews of the levies. The levies are reviewed midway through. These are both in year three of these two levies to check in. Specifically, the Developmental Disability Services, they've been enrolling a lot of clients due to some changes at the state. And we will be looking at this review and specifically to see how those caseloads have changed and what that means to the levy, as well as family services and treatment. For the 2022 reviews, the mental health, senior services, and indigent care, the next steps for those reviews will be requests for proposals from consultants, which I plan on working on in December with a goal of getting those consultant contracts before the commissioners in January. And the tax levy committee having their first meetings with agencies for presentations on their requests in February. If there are any specifics that the commissioners want to make sure they want advanced as we move forward in those requests for proposals, if I can get those in the next month or so, I can make sure that those are folded into those as well so the consultants are seeing any additional changes and specific items we want to highlight. And we're building that into the consulting contracts as well. New this year, the TLRC will be returning to in-person meetings at the Board of Elections for the levy reviews. We've met with the Board of, Gwen McFarlane, the Chair of the TLRC, and myself have met with the Board of Elections and given them our dates and worked around their schedules with the elections to make sure that we are able to do that again this year. Well, we've wrapped up the levy process in, well, the end of June with the recommendations on children's services. So they just have not met as a full group this fall, just with the Subcommittee on the Levy Review Process, which actually was in person last Thursday. And this is very, very hard to read, but that is the full scope and timeline of meetings upcoming. So just to show the level of workload in meetings going into these levy reviews. The goal is to get it to the commissioners by July, by, before the Fourth of July, given meeting schedules. Actually, hide it on here, but reduced it so I could bump up the font, would be June 28th, I believe. That's a Tuesday commission meeting. The people would vote on them for the November election. And the commissioners would vote that first week, by the first week of August to certify for the ballot.
Any additional questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good stuff, Lisa. I guess 13 years kind of helps. Okay, we will move forward with the Community Revitalization Grant Award recommendations. Mark Von Almond.
Von Almond, you have it right. Yep, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to present the funding recommendations for the 2021 Community Revitalization Grant. I'm excited about the potential for this new partnership with the county and the communities. But before I go any further, I, I really want to pay respect to the tremendous amount of help and expertise that we had with our review committee. We were lucky enough to have Holly Christman and Cheryl Floyd from County Administration, Steve Johns from County Planning and Development, and then Harry Blanton, Catherine Fitzgerald, and Dan Ferguson from HCDC. The three of them are joining me today for the presentation. I'll start off with a very quick program overview. There's a lot of different needs across the county in terms of community revitalization. And with this program, we're, we're working with county general funds as opposed to federal CDBG dollars. So we've been very conscientious in crafting a program that's flexible for those, for those varied, varied needs. Secondly, we feel like there's a lot of tools on the table for communities to take on strategic planning processes. And we're looking at this to be maybe the featured tool to help drive some implementation, making those planning projects a reality. And then finally, based on the policy agenda from this board, we are certainly emphasizing projects in need and communities in need. And we, we want the program to be accessible to everyone throughout the county. So we kind of, we have a small but mighty three-page application, and we didn't want to create any sort of unnecessary barriers, get as many people involved with, as possible. And like I mentioned, this is the first year for the program. We've, we've had to move along at a pretty quick pace. The program was announced on October 11th. And then a week later, we followed up with a Zoom meeting, hosting any communities with some initial interest in the project, going over kind of the overview characteristics. From that point forward, we made the review committee available to any communities with project-specific questions. And the applications were due on November 10th. That gave our review committee about a week to meet twice. And we went through and ranked the applications based on four main criteria that I'll go into more detail later in the presentation. That brings us to today, the 23rd. I'm here presenting the recommendations from that review committee. We're happy to answer any questions and fill in any blanks. But we do need to, to keep pace. I, I hope to be back here in December seeking final approval for grants. And then really after that, we'll move as quickly as possible to, to executing funding agreements and turning these exciting projects into reality.
Madam President, just very briefly, Mark, as I know you're going to be moving past the administrative aspect of this into the, into the grants, I just also wanted to thank the review committee, and I can't see who all is behind the pillar there. But I know you mentioned HCDC, but I think right after you mentioned that, Ms. Floyd walked in after you introduced members. And so I just wanted to thank Cheryl for all, for her help on this as well.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so here's some summary information on the applications we received. And we were luckily, lucky for us, 12 different communities were ready to step up, even with the, with the quick turnaround, with 14 really great applications. And they ranged quite a bit, all the way from 19,000 up to 911,000. And the applications hit on all three of the project categories that we listed in, in the summary documents. So the majority of them you see fell into property development. And actually, of those eight, the majority of those all involve property acquisitions. So it was really neat to see a lot of different communities stepping up, ready to take an active role, putting themselves out there, acquiring property, facilitating development on a site that the, the private market isn't ready to take on by themselves. We also had some great infrastructure projects and some building improvement projects, so really a nice mix overall. But the main point on this slide is the last one, and that's that we had $4.6 million in requests for $1 million in funding. So that just goes to cement the belief that there's a lot of projects out there that are ready to go. These communities are just looking for a funding partner to, to help take it on with them. And I have a list, and it's unfortunately cut off a little bit. I think maybe Woodlawn's the only one cut off. But here's the 14 different applications. I'm not going to go through each one, but I will note that Chivviet and Lachland both submitted two applications. Besides that, we did get one application each from Deer Park, Evendale, Gulf Manor, Madeira, Newtown, Norwood, Silverton, Springdale, Springfield, and Woodlawn. And these are the, the criteria that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. In this first year, we, we ranked these applications based on four main criteria. So with project impact, we're looking at things like the, the number of jobs and payroll created as a result of the project. If there's any private or, or other public property investment that's going to kind of be coaxed as, as a result of the county funding this project. And, and then also if there's any blight or nuisance removed as a result. Project need, that could manifest in, in a couple of different ways. Is the project located in an economically distressed community? Does the project in some specific way serve a, a lower moderate income populations? And then finally, if there's a, is there a constrained budget due to some notable circumstance? Like, for example, if it's like a really dirty site and there's a lot of cleanup that needs to take place before any development occurs there. For project support, we looked at number of public and private entities actively partnering on the project. The amount of funding that those partners have committed to the project to date. And if there was any letters of support attached to the application, attached to the application. And then finally, as I mentioned before, implementation of any previously adopted county or, or local plan. And then for applicant capacity, we wanted to see a complete and clear application from the communities. And we wanted to see details on how they were going to execute on the project. So for example, if it's a property acquisition, we want to see a clear path to them taking title to the property. If they're taking on a construction project, we want to see a detailed construction budget with various categories and that they have enough funding to, to, to take on the project. So based on those four criteria, the review committee is ready to recommend six projects for funding. And I have them, a couple of slides on each, in alphabetical order. And we'll start off in Chivviet, the funding of their property acquisition project of 3625 Harrison Avenue. And this would be an award in the amount of $350,000, and all of that would go towards acquisition of the property. If you're familiar with the block, this is where the old Caples store was in Chivviet. So it's right there in the middle of the business district. Unfortunately, the building has been vacant for a few years. So, so one, we see this as a kind of an important defensive maneuver to make sure this property doesn't fall into the wrong hands and then kind of drag the rest of the area down. But two, we also see it as an opportunity for Chivviet and the county to partner on kind of a reshaping of this, a, a more vibrant version of the Chivviet Business District. And I will mention that there was a very recent mini-planning grant study that called out this site as a near-term priority. So there's been some recent consensus established for the project as well. Here you see the property highlighted in red. There's a picture of Caples when it occupied the building. There's a, there's a retail component that fronts Harrison Avenue. And then there's kind of a component of the building further back, that's a storage area. And then the property also includes some surface parking that accesses from a, a separate side street. Okay, and moving on to the second project, we'll stay in Chivviet. And this is for a smaller project, but we feel like it's one that'll complement the, the previous project well. It's an LED lighting upgrade for, for Harrison Avenue. And this award would be in the amount of $26,000. It would be part of a much larger ODOT project that's currently in design, design stages, kind of overhaul the, the vast majority of Harrison Avenue as it, as it runs through Chivviet. The, the lighting upgrade would aid in safety and both aesthetics for the, for the existing, existing small businesses located on Harrison Avenue. And it would also implement a recent Chivviet safety study. And just kind of for reference, it would extend from, to the east, the intersection with Bridgetown and go all the way, or sorry, from the west to the intersection of Bridgetown, all the way to the east with their corp line just past North Bend Road. Moving along, we're also recommending funding of Gulf Manor's property acquisition project. This is for $250,000. That would go towards the acquisition of 6516 Wehe Road. Also some additional demolition and, and site work located at that site. This building has had code enforcement issues in, in recent years, and it's become a blight and nuisance issue for Gulf Manor. They're working with a couple of consultants now, crafting an overall economic development strategy. And this Wehe Road corridor has been established as a focus for future economic development efforts. So, so hopefully, this is the first phase in kind of a, a multi-step approach in, in turning this area around. You see the, the, again, the, the property highlighted there on the, on the left. It's, it's near the intersection of Los Anavil Road, and there's some commercial activity there to date. But the idea is to look at this entire Wehe Road corridor and getting all of that pop, property into a more productive use to support a, a nearby neighborhood business district. Moving, the next recommendation is in Lachland. And this is for, actually, a, a very large and, and long-term effort to attract a major employer, Pepper Construction. Pepper, Pepper Construction is looking to establish a Southwest Ohio headquarters that would result in 60 new employees and over $5 million in new payroll. This, the, the grants, Pepper Construction's looking to This, the, the grants, Pepper Construction's looking to bring additional employees to the site than previously envisioned, and this grant would specifically go towards the acquisition of an adjacent property, so that they could get more employees into the building and, and provide more surface parking for those employees. Overall, the project is $8.4 million, and really $3 million of that is state and federal historic tax credits, and $5 million is a private investment from Pepper Construction. So a well-leveraged project, and again, this would serve as implementation of a, of a recently completed planning effort between the county and Lachland. So you see the site highlighted kind of towards the, the bottom of the, the aerial image there. The, let's see if I can manage the light here. There we go. This is the building that Pepper Construction would move into. Just to the north here is actually the larger Lox site that they're working on Nayar properties with, and you see an image of the, of the site today. And the next project is also located in Lachland, and this is for the rehab of a publicly owned and, and managed parking lot in the Mill and Dunn Business District. And Lachland's been putting a lot of work in trying to attract investment and attention to their, their Mill and Dunn Business District that extends for just about two blocks just south of Wyoming, not far from the, the previous project we just talked about. They were able to submit letters of support on behalf of four nearby commercial buildings that all lean on this public lot for their operations. All the property owners talked about how they've been able to invest in their buildings, attract new tenants, and, and they talk about the ability to kind of build off that momentum if they have some more adequate parking that they can, that they can lean on. And, and I'll note that Lachland would also be contributing to this project with 60,000 in, in local funding. So again, property highlighted in red, and then the, and the parking lot you see there off to the right. And, and the four buildings that I mentioned are, are just to the south there, one, two, three, four. They have tenants such as an event center, photography studio, an architecture firm, so really a nice kind of variety that they're, they're building there. And then finally, the, the final recommendation is in, is in Norwood for a new facade program that they're looking to launch there. They'd be, the award would be for $200,000, and they'd be granting smaller sub-grants for storefront improvements. They, they look to match those with funding that property owners have ready to, to invest in, in their own storefronts. The, the, the hope is that they'd, they'd increase sales and business for some of the existing tenants, but there's also a fair amount of vacancy on Montgomery Road, so making the, making some of those vacant spaces more attractive and getting new tenants, new jobs moved in. They were able to submit support letters from a lot of property owners that are, that are ready to participate in the program, and this project would also serve as implementation for recent planning efforts between Norwood and the county. The, the map on the left, the, the red circle there is where they would start out in terms of their, their focus on Montgomery Road just south of the lateral, and they actually envision this as kind of like a pilot approach and seeking new and additional funds for an expanded program in the future, and they'd move kind of further south along Montgomery Road there. That's all I have for the, the, the awards. I will note that there were quite, quite a few applications, and, and those four hit best on our four criteria. Another thing that, that I just want to share is that some of the applications that weren't awarded, we've, we've either been able to touch those in the past with our other very similar grant program, the, the CDAP program, I think Evendale, Silverton, Springfield Township, and, and there may be a few others. So we're excited to get in, involved in, in some new communities with this grant program. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have kind of at the onset here. But like I mentioned, we'll, we'll hopefully continue to make progress. Funding agreements will be part of your final approval later in December, so, so we'll begin working on those now. And like I said, as, as soon as final approval from this board, we'll, we'll start working with the communities, because this will truly be a partnership to kind of bring these long-stalled projects into reality. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I want to make sure, so this is, are these CDBG dollars?
They are not. This would be county general funds.
General fund, okay. My next question, you do have some places that got multiple ones. Is that because the projects are together? Because you had a 4.6 million ask, so you couldn't, we didn't have enough to get everybody. But then you decided in some areas to allow them to have two. What was your thinking on that?
Yeah, I'd say the review committee kind of had, had several reasons why we took that approach. The, the main one, I will say, is that the four larger projects were, after we kind of initially went through and ranked the applications, we had those four larger ones at the top, and that spoke for about a million dollars of our 1.1 million dollars in funding. So we only had $100,000 left over at that point. This program is all about making an immediate impact, so we were reluctant to partially fund any of the other projects with the fear that they, they may not move forward. But really, it's, it's, it's not just that. We do feel like these two smaller projects also have merits unto themselves. The, the Chivviet lighting project, there's, there's a lot of small businesses, and a lot of them happen to be more active at, at nighttime along Harrison Avenue, so a lighting improvement could go a long ways in helping them out. And then, as I mentioned with the, the Lachland project, the smaller Lachland project, it was, a, a big part of that was the support letters that Lachland was able to secure from, from all the small businesses. Hey, it's, it's, it's a small lot, but it's, but it's our lot, and it makes a big difference. We have a lot of visitors coming, I think from all over the, the nation, so we felt like we, for, for those reasons, that's why we, we funded both the Chivviet and Lachland projects.
Thank you. And then the other question, back to your point, making sure that these projects, do we have like, or could we get the timetable on the projects? So, you know, if we are, there are some that are buying the property and they're going to do some things with them, could you add a timeline so we know what the timeline for the project happening?
Certainly. We'll be, we'll be looking to incorporate specifics in, in our funding agreements with each of these communities. Initially, the, the timeframe that was discussed was, hey, if, if you don't get these funds spent within, completely within two years, then, then that's where we're going to start and look at maybe reallocating them. But also happy to just report back with progress to the, to the board as we move through these.
That's great. And then the projects that are being, the buildings that are being bought, I would assume, are those, I won't assume, are those buildings up to date on their property taxes, or were they, were they properties that the property taxes weren't paid? And then lastly, when this is acquired by the local municipality, are they having to assume that tax, or how does that work?
For two of the acquisition projects, the city of Chivviet, I, I, I haven't been made aware of, and, and I would be nearly certain that there isn't any sort of delinquent property taxes for that, for that Harrison Avenue property. Gulf Manor did mention that there were code enforcement and other issues with, with the building that they're pursuing. I know they have reached out to the, to the port and, and the land bank to, to utilize their tools to, to not make it then a liability that's then put on to the, to the, to the community themselves.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a liability to the municipalities, but that information would be helpful as we're moving forward, because we want these municipalities to be successful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drew House.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and presenting us with this recommendation. So, you know, I think that the thing of note is the amount of request here at 4.6 million. This program was started last year in the budget. We've never done this before, and so we were wondering what the appetite would be in the, out in the jurisdictions, and evidently there is an appetite for this, and there's a lot of enthusiasm for it. So I'm glad to see that there were that many respondents. It makes me wonder, as I've wondered before related to this current budget, if we should add more money to this fund to accommodate more projects, because this was a bit of a trial run. So there's something I think, I know I'll be looking at moving forward. The other thing is that I, I too noted which projects were funded, and, and some of them obviously were not because we couldn't afford to do it. But related to some of the ones that didn't get chosen for this funding, I, I, at the same time, and I don't know if it was on purpose, I got a, a memo related to the CDAP funding, and so I see that many of the communities that got CDAP funding were the ones that did not get some of this general fund money. So I, I don't know if you're purposely trying to balance out, but it seems there is a bit of a balancing going on here where a neighborhood like Deer Park got CDAP funding but did not get the general fund money. Then Newtown got CDAP but did not get this, and so I, I feel like you've, I don't know if it's intentional, but I applaud you for it. There's a balancing going on here where we're trying to make sure that each and every community has an opportunity for some funding, whether it's through the CDAP from federal funding, CDBG, or whether, whether it's through this funding, through this program. So I just did want to note it, because I had the same observation as I was looking through who got funding. And so one last thing, as you guys think through the qualifications related to the jurisdictions that are applying, and I, I'm relating back to the state capital budget and, and, you know, our time back in the legislature, there were different things that we asked the jurisdictions or, or the nonprofits or whoever it was applying to provide for us. And I don't know if you, you asked for this and you got it, it's just not reflected here, but one thing we wanted to know was what the other partnerships were, who, who was going to offer more dollars in? And so obviously, in, in a lot of these projects, it seems as though the local, like Chivviet is, is putting some money in, or there's somebody else, or maybe it's a, a development corporation in the community putting money in. So if you could provide that for us, if you've got it in the future, I think it would be helpful for us to see if these projects are happening in partnership outside just the jurisdiction itself, but if there are other partners that are being brought in, and, and maybe that elevates them, you know, as far as getting the funding, when you prove that you've really vetted it and you've got partnerships. The other thing is that when we, when we look at the request, I, I wonder if we could add another column in the future that says the total amount of funding needed for the project, and, or I don't, I don't know if maybe these are the total amounts, but if they're, if the total is higher than the request, I would be interested to see that column, to see what portion of the funding is being provided through this grant, and what is outstanding or, or coming in from other sources. I hope I didn't make that overly complicated. And, and I'll follow up with you, just, just to think through what, what we are seeing as a board, so that we can make sure that, as, as I said, these are happening in partnership with all the entities throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few comments. First of all, first and foremost, I want to thank the committee that took the time to review this and have a process in place and to consider these impact items. On the project impact, I, I think we need to include, be sure to include the commissioner's policy agenda as part of one of these criterias. We look at jobs and payroll and all of that, but at the same time, the commission is saying, we want to spread this money out. We want to make sure that a lot of people in the suburban areas, particularly because we always kind of focus in this area, are receiving monies also. I would like to see a map of the ones that were chosen, so we can look at Hamilton County and see where these places, I know where they are, but to just look at a map of who received allocation. Also tried to correlate between this revitalization grant and the CDAP grant, and I noticed that Woodlawn, Springdale, and Newtown did not get anything in either one. So I'd also wanted to talk about, when we talk about spreading the wealth, they can look at other, like CDBG can be another funding source or whatever, but I'm concerned about, we're saying jobs, payroll, okay, that's good, but I'm concerned about, for instance, Springdale asked for a, I got notes everywhere, but asked for a court, an outdoor court.
Yes, yes.
For $19,000. And I didn't understand why they were not, maybe they didn't give everything they needed, which, that's another point. The ones that didn't get it, I didn't get a summary on why they didn't. But they asked for $19,000 out of 1.1, and we, we financed parking lots for, who was it? Lachland and some, who was it?
It was Lachland and, sorry, I'm.
Let me, it was two parking lots that were funded. Maybe it was the ones who got two. I think it might have been Chivviet.
Sorry, I guess both Lachland projects involved parking, so that, that's, those are the two projects.
Okay, well, my point is, is this. Chivviet got funding for a parking area. Lachland got funding for a parking area. And so they're asking 19,000, Springdale, for an outdoor court. That's a, I mean, it's not a parking area, but it's a court. It doesn't have jobs and payroll. So I'm just really puzzled why they didn't get 19,000. The other one, Woodlawn, asked for 180,000, and they're out in that other area, so that's why I said I'd like to see a ba, a map. Why they didn't get their 180,000, I'm sure there's some reasons, that's why you had a committee, but I didn't get the, the list of why they didn't get it. Let's see, George. I was concerned about the projects and the fact, I think Commissioner, I know she did, Commissioner Reese brought up about why did they get two allocations? Why couldn't they get one? And then most projects take more than a year to do whatever they're going to do. Either have them, Chivviet get one and give them half an allocation, and maybe they can put in for grants somewhere else. You don't want to start a process and can't finish it. But my thought is that, and I'll just be specific, that I, I think Springdale should have received it. I think Woodlawn, who only asked for 180,000, which is out this way, this is a new project, and we want people to know that we're fair, and I'm not saying we're not fair, but I want to say that we're spreading the wealth around. And so I really have an issue with Lachland and Chivviet getting two grants, considering, because I think about, you know, when I was in Lincoln Heights, we put in for grants, and we were like, you know, you know, eating our nails, just, are we going to get it? Are we going to get it? So to be able to just give more of the ones who applied, and obviously they were eligible, or you wouldn't have put them on the list, just to spread the money out more. I, I just, I, I just have a problem with these, not all of the recommendations, but a lot of the recommendations. I just want to make sure I say everything. Chivviet, Lachland. I mean, and some of the, of course, requests I thought were a little ridiculous, but they, you know, if you don't ask for it, you can't get it. So some of the requests were extremely high. So when I go back finally, my final comment is, Woodlawn, Springdale, Newtown got nothing out of either of these allocations. And I think we need, Newtown is just a little, little town trying to do better. And so for us, 190,000 is not a big deal to us when we're dealing with millions, but for them, it could be a lifesaver. So I just can't go with all the recommendations right now, and I just really applaud the committee for all the work on it and what they thought was best. But I think if we look at the policy agenda of the commissioners and where, and I can't speak for everybody, but where we want to go and where we want to acknowledge, you know, entities in other areas that we might look at this a little differently. And if you could just provide me a map so we can just visually see it, and also a list of the ones who did not, not a list, but a short summary of why they were not chosen. And, and I heard your explanation on why you gave two, but they don't even relate. The projects don't even relate to each. I could see for Chivviet, 350,000, and we gave 25,000 more because they need that for a bridge or something. But the, the projects are so different, and I just don't think it's, it's fair. So that's where I am with it.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I, if I could, and I'm not sure if the board saw this, because it came today, but I know Mr. Von Allman had sent out to the board a report this morning that related to all of the projects in a description. Now, I don't know, to your request, Madam President, I don't know if it went into a specific rationale for why they did not get it, but we can follow up with the board on, on that rationale. But just wanted the board to be aware that a full listing of the projects and their descriptions. But just wanted the board to be aware that a full listing of the projects and their description went out today, but we can certainly follow up to your question, Commissioner, with the rationale for the scoring the way it was.
Yeah, I see that list here after my request yesterday I made to you.
Yep.
That I needed more information, so I thank you for that list, but I still need the summary of why they were not chosen. Thank you.
Can I follow up with a question? So I think, you know, as we continue to think through CDBG, CDAP, this fund, I think it would be really helpful, and Madam President, not to interfere with the map that you've requested, but if we can get an additional map that shows all these programs overlaid on top of one another, because I too am interested in seeing, you know, as far as kind of spreading the wealth or, you know, having projects far and wide, I think it would be helpful visually for us to see, maybe over the last couple of years even, where these dollars have gone, because it's a project or a request proposal that we go through on an annual basis, and I think it would be good to see where these dollars are going year after year, so that we can kind of overlay that information, so somebody gets it one year, somebody else gets it a different year, to the point of kind of spreading this around.
I'll just quickly add that Holly and Jeff actually have staff working on a map, just as you explained. It's for five years. It does show a handful of categories of projects. I'm coordinating with Kages on that right now, and we do have that just about wrapped up, and I'll have it to you shortly.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to add to that, I'm glad to see that we're working on it. I really think that, just hearing from all of us in the board, each of us are saying it in our own way, but it really helps us with, today with new technology, we should be able to have an interactive map of where we are spending our dollars. It is very difficult to get, you know, we get an email, you give me something today, and I'm getting ready for a budget, you know, I don't have time to really get into it. That's why I don't like the last-minute stuff. I don't give us a chance to ask questions, get back with it. But I do think we should start 2022 and really hunker down and get this interactive map. We need it for where we're putting our, you know, for some people, they don't care if it's CDBG or if it's general fund, it's, you know, we do, because we get into the weeds, but like President Dumas said, Newtown, I don't care if it's coming from us through CDBG or us through this program, or maybe it's CARES, maybe it's another program, but for us, just to see an overlay of, here's what we're doing in what areas, because we are looking to open up, so people who may not have done business with the county before are, you know, they can have an opportunity as well. We need the same thing for housing, so when we're doing these, when we're making these decisions, we can have a understanding. We were just out at Forest Park, and the mayor there, well, we were there for our budget here, and there, you know, Forest Park is saying, you know, where's our fair share? And it might not be in this, but it might be in something else, but it's very difficult if we don't have a big one, one Hamilton County type of roadmap. So that doesn't fall all on your shoulders, but I think the board is saying that to help us make intelligent decisions, that we have to go out here and face the voters who are all asking, what about my area? So I just wanted to add that I think that would be great.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I could, to Mr. Von Allman's point and to Commissioner Reese's second thing of that, the map that we're working on does include and will include the different economic development projects, but also where we have put money into affordable housing projects. We're looking at adding in a transportation layer, just so you can get an understanding across everywhere that the county puts money from an infrastructure development perspective. We can even build out on it from there in terms of some of the more social aspects of the work that the county does, in terms of, you know, where we have different resources, infrastructure, et cetera. But I just want to let you know that the hope is, and the goal is, for that map to be interactive and to be as multi-layered and multifunctional as possible, so you can get, you know, depending upon where you're talking about in the community, you can get an idea of everything that's going on there.
It also includes, oh, sorry. It also includes property tax incentive projects and our site readiness projects.
That will also be great for the committee, because I'm thinking about, now you just brought up something I was thinking about, like Norwood. We gave lots of money just recently for that corridor on Montgomery Road. I mean, and I don't remember, so what I'm saying, if they don't know, if the committee doesn't know that we just gave all this money to Norwood already, and then they approve them because it's another good project, then you have to consider whether or not this is something we want to do right now. I know the legislation, Ohio legislation, sent down a seven-page, what, 17 different entities on each page for, I'm representing the county, for the state capital task force to decide who gets money. And the first thing that was said is, when is the last time they got money? Where did they get it from? So we just have to consider that. So I was just a little surprised about Norwood. It was a good project, but we just did quite a bit with them, so, okay, thank you. I appreciate you.
Sure. Can I ask for some detail about the process here and when, you know, obviously, this is a recommendation, so what's the action moving forward?
Quite a bit of items to follow up with the commissioners on, based on today's discussion, and we'll get that information to you promptly. From there, I'd say we kind of just keep the lines of communication open, but we, for budgetary reasons, we do need to get this funding round in before year's end, so the plan is to return for a regular board meeting at some point in December, seeking final approval. So that's the extent of the process we have mapped out. We're having to move, I would say, unfortunately, fast due to this kind of initial launching of the program.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank the committee. So I will move forward. You have before you, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney to discuss pending litigation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.